That's exactly what I'm gonna do. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the city council meeting for January 16th, 2024, to order. If you could all rise and join me for the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, free and visible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Kim, could you call the roll, Pete?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Boyce?
Yeah.
Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Corr?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Michaux?
Here.
Councilmember Troutner?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kim. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
No changes.
All right, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda as published?
I'll move.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. All right, we are gonna move into the fun portion of this evening. We've got some public recognition, and I'm going to start out with our January 2024 Employee of the Month. I'm so glad that you're here. So each month, employees of the City of Kent get together and they nominate one of their coworkers to be employee of the month, and those employees exemplify our mission, vision, values, and goals, are outstanding partners in the workforce, and dedicated to the mission of the city. So I am excited tonight to announce that Brooks Chatterton is our January Employee of the Month, sitting right here in the front row. Brooks started working for the city on March 16th, 2022, as a maintenance worker two in Parks facilities. He was promoted to his current position as a maintenance worker three on April 16th, 2023. Brooks performs a variety of skilled journey-level maintenance work to maintain, repair, and upkeep city, public buildings, facilities, and grounds. Brooks was nominated because he consistently demonstrates outstanding dedication and exceptional performance. He goes above and beyond expectations, exceeding targets, and delivering exceptional results. He demonstrates a strong work ethic, meets upkeep ticket goals, and delivers high-quality work. He collaborates effectively with his colleagues, fostering a positive and productive work environment. Brooks steps up when needed and inspires others to perform at their best. What people may not always see is his overall contributions to the atmosphere in the facility's office and everywhere he goes. Anytime he's around, everyone's in a good mood and laughing. It shows how great a person he is and how he contributes to go above and beyond in his work. Brooks continuously embraces our values, and we celebrate him as January's Employee of the Month. So I always ask, but I never want to put anybody in the spot, would you like to come up and say something?
I just wanna say that it's everybody that I work with that makes it possible for me to do what I do.
Well.
It's a great place to work. I've never been happier.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
So his picture will go on the wall here shortly, and then everybody can see it when they pass in the lobby. So congratulations, Brooks.
Yep.
All right, the next thing that we have on the agenda is a proclamation for Kent Rotary's 65th anniversary. So I see some Rotarians back here. Whoever wants to come up and accept the proclamation can come up to the podium. I'm gonna read it, and then I'll come down and present it. So it says, "Whereas, since 1958, the Rotary Club of Kent and the Rotary Club Foundation of Kent have been serving the Kent community in the spirit of Rotary International. And whereas, the Rotary Club of Kent Foundation uses donations to improve the lives of people in the city of Kent, surrounding area, and worldwide. And whereas, Rotary has prided itself on its strength and their ability and commitment to bring people together to build partnerships, friendships, and solutions through service. And whereas, they have established and contributed to numerous programs which benefit our community, including Music for Life, Backpack Buddies, Back to School Supply Drives, Harvest Against Hunger, and numerous scholarship opportunities. And whereas, the City of Kent is grateful for the work that they've done to benefit our students, residents, and community. Now therefore, I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim that the City of Kent congratulates the Kent Rotary on their 65th anniversary and encourage all residents to join me in the celebration of this milestone." In addition to all that, I just wanna say thank you. The Rotary Club of Kent, we have some members around here, does so many amazing things for our city. We have seen it for 65 years. We saw it in a way that I don't think anyone will ever be able to understand during the pandemic. The continued work with the food bank, the list of things that you all do for this community would have made this proclamation six pages long. So I can't say thank you enough. We are so grateful for everything that you do. I'm gonna come down, we'll do a quick picture, and then if you'd like to say a few words.
Where do you want to do the picture?
Right in the center. You should come down.
You should.
We've been proud members of Kent, and we've, as Dana has said, we've been involved in a lot. I don't wanna take up too much time, but thank you so much for recognizing, and we are happy to be here and happy to support our community. Thank you.
Thank you, so grateful. And whatever, I would be remiss, Councilmember Thomas is no longer here on the dais, but he would have to say that even as a Kauanian, we love the work that Rotary's do.
We do partner with a lot of our other service.
We do a lot of partnering, and I am very, very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have one more proclamation this evening. A little less fun, a lot more serious, but very, very important that we talk about this. So this is a proclamation for Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month. Whereas, human trafficking is modern-day slavery and involves the use of force, fraud, and coercion to exploit a person for involuntary servitude, labor, or commercial sex acts. And whereas, trafficking victims can be any gender, age, or immigration status. And whereas, the average age of a girl that is exploited, coerced, or forced into abuse is 12 to 14 years old, while for boys, 11 to 13 years of age. And whereas, each year, as many as 100,000 to 300,000 American children are at risk of being trafficked in the United States. And whereas, traffickers may be strangers, acquaintances, or family members, and target young victims through social media, chat groups, and at everyday activities in the community. And whereas, after drug dealing, human trafficking is tied with the illegal arms industry as the second-largest criminal industry in the world today and the fastest-growing. And whereas, assisting victims of human trafficking requires a coordinated community response among community groups, social services, schools, and law enforcement. Now therefore, I, Dana Ralph, the Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim the month of January to be Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month in the City of Kent. And I call upon the people of the city to support this observance by helping to educate residents about human trafficking in our city and across America and around the world. Joining us to accept the proclamation this evening is Deputy Andy Connor.
Well, thank you for having me. I really appreciate this. Just a quick background, my name is Deputy Andy Connor with King County Sheriff. I've worked with them for over 26 years, and I worked in the city of Sea-Tac primarily. And over the years, back in 2000, early 2000s, I come across a lot of girls involved in prostitution, and that's how my journey started with all of this. Similar to domestic violence, when I started my career, it was different than it is now. Now there's awareness, there's resources, there's national awareness, there's lots of resources for a victim of domestic violence. And that all started with a movement. It took a long time to get there, but now, even though domestic violence still happens today, absolutely, there's resources, there's money, there's awareness, law enforcement, we have different laws on the books to help prevent and to help protect the victims and prosecute the suspects. So in the same manner, human trafficking, sex trafficking is the same, it's the same dynamic, it's just not as well-known, but it's coming now, it's coming along. So back in the early years, the girls on the streets told me their stories and told me how they were entrapped and they could not leave on their own free will. So that's how I started the Genesis Project, because when, once I knew what they were up against, I knew, I tried to find resources, because I was looking for resources. I found domestic violence, drug addiction, and all the other things that we deal with. I couldn't find anything with sex trafficking. And it's a unique demographic, it's a unique population in that everyone's involved, there's every ethnicity, every background, but the trafficked person itself is unique to those people, and they require a lot of help and a lot of encouragement, a lot of support to get them out of that situation. Myself and the Genesis Project, and there's only maybe one other in this area that provides those direct services, and so I don't wanna take up too much time, but that's how it started for me. And once I figured that out, I wanted to create a place for them to go, an actual drop-in center that we have in Sea-Tac, for them to go and to receive those services and those avenues and pathways out to a better life. That's the nutshell version. So I just wanna thank the City of Kent, I wanna thank Chief and the Kent PD, we've been partnering with them for many years. Matter of fact, at the grand opening at our center in 2011, we had probably three, four Kent police officers and several detectives there at our grand opening. We partnered with other law enforcement and FBI and Homeland Security around the area, because it takes an effort and it just keeps building, we just want more awareness, we want, I testify in Olympia several times for new laws on the books. So I'm just trying to get that effort to where domestic violence was 26 years ago and where it is today, and where human trafficking will be 20 years from now. We'll have those resources and those wraparound programs and the support from the city and the community to help these young ladies get out of this lifestyle, because they're not there by their own free will. So thank you for having me, thank you for partnering with us, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much for the work that you are doing. I think one of the key points there is awareness, making sure that we're talking about it, knowing that it can happen to anybody, it can happen to your neighbor, it can happen to your child, it can happen to somebody down the street, and we just need to be aware, watch for those signs, and then know that there are services available. So thank you very, very much. All right, Council, on your consent calendar this evening is an appointment to the Civil Services Commission recommending Charlie Mitchell, who was appointed to serve an unexpired term, be reappointed to a full term. Charlie is a teacher in the Kent School District, a parent, a coach, has been involved in the community for a very long time, and has been a great addition to the Civil Service Commission. So it's on consent calendar, and my hope is that you confirm that appointment.
Okay.
All right, Council President Boyce, do you have community events?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do we have a couple of events going on at the Cecil Showware Center? We have the Thunderbirds on January 20th playing the Tri-State American. They're also back on the 21st playing the Wenatchee Wow. We got the Tacoma Stars playing the Empire Strikers on January 25th, the Harding Gold Traders on the 26th, Thunderbird back in town against the Everett Civil Tips, and then the Tacoma Stars versus St. Agar Sockers, and then on the February 17th, Tobey Matt Hit Deep Tour on 2024, and then April 4th, Mercy Me, and the last one, April 10 and 11, Paw Patrol Live Heroes Unite. That should be fun. So that's what's going on at the Cecil Showware Center. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you, Council President. Any other community events? All right, Councilmember Fincher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have our City Spotlight Series, so the Kent Spotlight Series is still rolling along. You have time to catch shows, there's still about four shows left. So if you like guitar music, if you like Joni Mitchell, or there's a whole bunch of people who would benefit from hearing good music, check out the website, Spotlight Series, look that up, get your ticket, and shows are January and February, so take a look.
All right, thank you. Any other community events? Okay, that brings us down to our final item under Public Communications, and that is our Public Safety Report, and joining us this evening is Chief Raph Padilla.
All right, thank you, Kim. Good evening, everybody. Mayor Ralph, members of the councils, my pleasure to bring you tonight's report. It's a medium-sized report this month, so we'll get right into it. Wanted to update everybody, I know we did these promotions last month, but wanted the council to be informed in our community, we have two new sergeants. Sergeant Matt Levi and Sergeant Sean Goforth were promoted last month. Both these gentlemen are veteran officers, have done a lot of work. Both these two in particular, during the last couple of years of police reform, have really helped us reform some of the way we do business, particularly with our training. Very proud for the opportunity to promote them, and looking forward to the work they do, and of course, this comes because we are stabilizing our staffing. A lot of our promotions were held off while we stabilized staffing on the road, now we're getting caught up with our promotions, so exciting news there. End of the year crime stats, so transitioning. I'll give it to you straight, it's a little bit better than last year, but it's still not good. We've made some improvement, but we have a ways to go. So if your eyes are better than mine, and you can see that clearly, these are vehicle crimes. If you look at the blue bars, what they indicate is a five-year trend range. So what we would expect is that red dotted line to be somewhere in the five-year range. When it's way above like that, that shows you we are very high numbers. So there's a clear demonstration of where we are. Vehicle thefts were up significantly this year. Vehicle prowls, interestingly enough, vehicle prowls are the, where your car's broken into, but the car's not stolen. Those are also trending, not great, but lower than we would normally see in a five-year range pattern, so a little bit mixed bag there. Burglaries, we made some progress in residential burglaries, which is good. We're kinda trending low in that. Commercial burglaries continue to still be high. As you're seeing on the news, I think almost daily, somebody's taking a car and ramming it into a building and stealing stuff, and so that continues to be a challenge for us, something to continue to work on, but those are the numbers there. Robberies, this is a very high trend, and this one bothers me because a lot of the robberies can turn violent quickly. A lot of our robberies involve people armed with weapons, firearms and whatnot, so this number is high. Our offenders, our youth offenders in this category is also high, it's a trend that we're seeing clearly. So there's that. And there's kinda some year-to-year comparisons. When I presented this, I went back and looked at my presentation last January, there was a lot more red on that chart, there's still far too much red there. But vehicle thefts are a big deal, obviously, the robberies we talked about. Vehicle recoveries, for those not familiar with that category, that's actually a positive metric, those are the number of vehicles we're finding and returning to people. The bad part of that is, is they're being dumped here in Kent, so there's that. I guess I should just stick with the positive on that, sorry. And then aggravated assaults are pretty much up double digits, our shootings are still way high, 159 is not anything close to what our norm five years would be, but it is lower than the previous two years, so it's a second-year trend downwards a little, 6% in that category. Look at our shootings by category, 13 of our shootings have resulted in homicides, 38 injuries, 40 in property damage, and 68 where we verified there was a shooting, and thank goodness, nobody got hurt or injured. So 159 is what it brings us to for the total for 2023. And you can see the little bit of the downward trend there from last year. And I wanna be clear, because I get this question, the homicides, those homicides there represent the ones that are caused by firearms. Our total is closer to 19. You add in vehicle homicides and some other things in there, it's closer to 19. Any questions at that point?
Questions? All right.
Mayor, I know you're not gonna, I know you're gonna touch on this, I just was informed, so I'm not gonna steal your thunder, other than to say, our elected officials, Mayor, you, and members of the council are very active already in this short session. You were down testifying today in force, along with some representatives from the community, and as your police chief, I just wanna say thank you. Giving that information to our state-elected officials is really important, and so you exercised that and represented our city well today, and I just wanna say thanks. Boy, that's a big picture of me. Yeah, Coffee the Chief, coming up next month, wanna put in an early plug, we're gonna have it right down here, Maggie's on Meeker Street there, from 8 to 10, come on out, it's, it will be our first kickoff one for the year, and we're looking forward to talking about a multitude of things, including our staffing, is an ongoing topic, and the things we're doing to get that going. I also wanna talk about some of the positive things going into this next year, because I think there are some positives, namely, our staffing is stabilized to where we're backfilling positions. We are at the tail end of training all those new officers that weren't fully functional, and we are replenishing our specialty units like SOU, Special Operations, Neighborhood Response Team, Crime Unit. So I think we're gonna make a bigger dent this coming year, and we have resources. We still need more, right? We still need more. So with that, Mayor, that concludes my report, and I'll take any questions.
All right, Councilmember Corr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the report. My question, I guess it's more of like a community safety thing, I guess. Reading your report, we just see burglaries happening with a weapon almost every day. What can the community do to protect themselves? What can be done, you know, like, don't engage type of a thing, it's just, my dad saw one of the robberies happening down, in the bank downtown Kent a couple days ago, and he was like, I should have done something, like, no, you stay away. Because he saw that happen, and he's like, okay, maybe I should have done something to help that, I'm like, mm-mm, we don't do that. You don't know what he has, you don't know what's gonna happen, so it's kind of a message out there for our community, because it's just...
The message, and thank you for bringing that up, the message is that I really don't want our communities taking things into our own hands, it's, there's too much risk, particularly when we're talking about property, right? I'd rather, I'd rather see them get away with the property than something happen bad, so there's that. I would encourage people like your father to do what the people did at the Bank of America that was hit. Get on the 911? Yeah, 911 and call. We caught that person down the street on First Avenue or Railroad Avenue. And that came about because we were getting updated information, people calling going, hey, there's this guy trying to steal a car, hey, this guy's running down here, and as dispatches updating, the units are able to move and coordinate. And so fortunately, we got him. So be a good witness, try to be specific about what you see, and when you report it, it would be awesome. In terms of protecting yourself, you know, I encourage people to always just to be aware of their surroundings. A lot of times, you can avoid wrongdoers just by going, you know, you kinda know something's not right, and you maneuver around them. Yeah, and I always like safety in numbers when you're on the public. A lot of the trend with the robberies are people walking around, doing this as they walk around, or doing this, and they're really attached to that cellphone, and they're not paying attention to what's going on. That speaks to those bad actors, like, this is a target of opportunity, so don't be that person. Lastly, in your homes, you wanna make your home a place that's one, hard to get into, but also discouraging, like, we've talked many times about thieves and burglars being lazy. Try to make your home such that it doesn't, it's not an easy target. So we're talking lighting, we're talking cutting back your hedges, making sure that there's visibility. I strongly encourage the video surveillance cameras that are out there, and have come down significantly in price, and the best part of all this is nosy neighbors, make friends with, because I remember Mrs. Kravitz from Bewitched, we might be not old enough for that. Every neighborhood needs a Mrs. Kravitz, because Mrs. Kravitz is calling 911 whenever things don't look good, and we want those calls. We want those calls when appropriately so there's a potential crime's gonna be committed. So those would be some things I'd throw out.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions? My box isn't working, so if you do have a question, just raise your hand, so. All right, thank you, Chief, appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we will move in to reports, an opportunity for everyone up here on the dais to provide a report of the work that they've been doing outside of regularly-scheduled council meetings, so committees, regional work, that kind of thing. I will keep my report short tonight. Wanna say thank you to Council President Boyce, Councilmember Corr, and Councilmember Michaux for joining us in testifying in Olympia today for our one and only legislative priority, and that is increased funding for law enforcement. So while you heard the Chief talk about the fact that we are staffed up, we are staffed up to budget, we are not staffed up to what the city needs to keep it, to keep this community safe, we don't have enough funding for things like community court and our co-responder model. So we were in Olympia in front of the local government committee today, testifying on a measure that would give this council the ability to vote on a three-tenths of one percent, or three pennies on a $10 purchase sales tax that would allow us to increase all of those programs and hire somewhere near 30 officers, which, for the record, would simply get us to average in the state of Washington, not asking, to quote the Chief, not asking for the star in the moons, we are asking for the ability for our officers, to have enough officers to respond to crime in a timely manner, in a way that our community deserves and expects. So again, thank you to everybody for joining us today, we've got a lot of work ahead of us. The next stop is to determine whether or not local government will vote on this, and we should know that on Friday. They don't have to vote on bills or public hearings that are held, so we'll know, we'll know more on Friday. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to our Chief Administrative Officer, Pat Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the interest of time and the potential for bad weather tonight, I'm just gonna refer you to the agenda packet, which has my report. Thank you.
And Pat also joined us in Olympia today, along with a couple of community members for testimony, was very, very grateful, so thank you. Council President?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great meeting today, had a lot of stuff going on in our operation meeting, so I'm sure Councilmember will be reporting on the outcome of the operation meeting. Four is our workshop, we had two items in the workshop, one was the grant summer for 2023, 2024, opportunity grants, city did a great job, certain project, meet me on Meeker, Benson Corridor, 76th Avenue, the River crossing, and then Safe Street, and that's a potential project for 2024. We love grants, grants are good. They also talk about the local road safety plan, really very interesting, they're really looking at the data, data-driven, based on accidents and the fatality that happens within the kids in the area, trying to find ways to try to put countermeasure in place to try to prevent some of those things there. So the top three was pedestrian T-bones, and then fits objects like trees and poles and stuff like that. So, so that's all I have today, so I'm gonna start down here to my left, and Councilmember Michaux, please.
Thank you so much, Council President. I serve as the Parks Council Chairperson, I forget what we call it.
Subject matter.
Cow. For the first was, we are, we accepted a property purchase agreement to expand Cursant Park, and then also, they gave a presentation on new play equipment and design for tot lot number four. I also serve on the Regional Law, Safety, and Justice Committee, and we got an interesting presentation last month about King County's care and closure plan for closing the youth detention facilities in King County. It was very enlightening, the King County Executive had asked staff to come up with a plan and to talk to, talk with stakeholders, come up with a plan to close those youth detention facilities. They are in favor of sending youth criminals home and giving them services at home. If you would like to learn more about that, they are going to have a Zoom meeting on February 29th, and I can send the link for that. Thankfully, some judges, most judges, sent a letter saying that they did not agree with this plan, and they sent that to our King County Executive. So more on that later. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Michaux. Councilmember Corr?
Thank you, Council President. I serve on K4C, King County City's Climate Collaboration. We had our meeting... We had our meeting last Friday, we basically discussed the legislative session and all the bills that that committee is supporting. We talked about House Bill 2049, which is rewrap, ensuring curbside residential recycling, and this bill also considers obtaining authority with local governments on recycling. So we don't know where that bill is going to end up, but we had some really good discussions on that. And we're also focusing on some other bills, including community solar programs, so I'll have more on that over the next coming weeks, on where they end up and what's happening, because it's still early on. I also serve as the Chair for the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency Advisory Council, and we will be meeting on January 25th. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Councilmember McCord, don't let the stopwatch bother you. If you need more time, you can have it, please. Think somebody wanted to pick up with less left off, or we won't go on, eh? Okay, Councilmember Malamra, please, no timer on you, okay?
Timer, okay, great. So I serve on the King County Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council, and we had a meeting on Friday. Our speaker was Dr. Clara Beridge from the UW School of Social Work specializing in gerontology. It was a really interesting conversation, I think it's going to be the first of many, hopefully, to come in the policy realm around Gen AI and the benefits to modern, you know, monitoring patterns of, you know, at-risk seniors, you know, that might, versus some of the privacy and, and concerns and restrictions that could be put on them. So very, you know, very interesting. It's, we're in the very, very early days, we had some discussions about, you know, what Europe does with the GDPR has a lot more privacy protections than what we have right now in federal law in the U.S. There are some efforts coming out of both Biden's administration through executive orders, and then also Susan Del Benet has put forth a federal data privacy bill that would cover some of this, this area, specific to seniors as well, that would put us more on par with what Europe's doing. So like I said, I think it was just the beginning of probably many conversations in, in this realm, so.
Equally terrifying and exciting at the same time.
It was a very interesting conversation, because there are definitely some benefits, and yeah, and some terrifying aspects as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Malamra. Councilmember Remma Troutner.
Thank you, Council President. I am the subject matter chair for Economic and Community Development. We had one item on the agenda today, and it was about a consultant, consultant contract agreement or amendment for the 2024 comprehensive plan, which is something we continue to talk about, and will continue to bring back to this body here. I am also in the Regional Transit Committee, we did not meet in December, and we are not meeting in January. And then Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Council President Boyce and I sit on the Puget Sound Fire Governance Board. We have our first meeting of the year tomorrow, and we are meeting at our new location, which is really exciting. We are going to be meeting in the future down at the Training Center on 84th and Central. So looking forward to seeing our new dais, and what, being able to have meetings where we have, get to recognize some of our firefighters that are being promoted and do that in front of our board. So very excited to have that new building and access to all of that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutner. Councilmember McCord, could you put a timer on as we get Councilmember Fenter to go, please?
Somehow I knew that was going to...
All right, Councilmember Fenter, please.
Thank you. So the City Arts Plan, the 2024 to 2028 City Arts Plan, was reviewed at the Arts Commission meeting, and four of the shows for the coming year, the 24, 20, 24, 25, that, for that show, for that series of shows, four of those shows are already on the books, booked in, and then we still have several others that we are waiting to sign. And so that'll be for the Spotlight Series, for the Kent, let's see, KCD normally meets every other month, but one of the committees is still continuing the election work that we've been looking at for the past couple of years, trying to get it on the ballot on the normal cycle, so more people know about it, are aware, can run for one of those seats, and there's just more awareness to it. And as far as the Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Committee, we meet on the fourth Thursday of this month. I am done, not almost. I forgot about Public Works, there was an excellent series done during the workshop tonight, you thought, that's what you get, Council President. So I suggest for everyone to take a look at the workshop. Between both the Committee of the Whole and the workshop, Public Works covered a lot of things today. Some of those things were Meet Me on Meeker, culvert work, trip reduction work, flood control, pollutants and water protection, lot of different things, street safety improvements. Look at that report, not only does it cover some of those things, but it also gives you a good look at what you can look forward to coming, and what is proposed to be coming. So, and our trip, and a couple of our different programs that we have here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fenter. We love to have fun, but also we're a busy group representing our city too, so thank you guys for all your work you do. Are you waving at me, or you got something to say?
I, I forgot something so very important. Today is my son's 18th birthday, and so I'm wishing him a happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Gabe.
But I want to top it all, tomorrow's my 38th wedding anniversary, so.
Happy anniversary, with all the celebrations.
All right, Madam Mayor, we all die.
Thank you. We do not have a public hearing tonight, so that brings us down to public comment. Public comment period is an opportunity to speak to the council or mayor on issues that relate to the city of Kent or agenda items the council will consider this evening. This is not an open public forum, and comments that do not relate to the business of the city are not permitted. Additionally, the state of Washington strictly prohibits people from using this public comment opportunity for political campaign purposes, including to support or oppose a ballot measure or any candidate seeking public office. Speakers may not give political campaign speeches, but must instead speak concerning matters of the city and the council's agenda. Further, in providing public comments, speakers must address the mayor and council as a whole. Please, remarks intended to target an individual on the dais are not permitted. And finally, please note that public comment opportunity is for you to provide information to the mayor and the council that you would like for us to consider, but we will not be able to answer questions during the meeting itself. Kim, can you please call up our speakers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first speaker is Perry Sobolak, and he's going to speak on taxes.
All right, and if you could state your name and city of residence for the record, and the timer will be up on the screen.
Perry Sobolak, 25-year Kent resident. My first order of business was going to be to welcome John Boyd to, as a member of the council, but apparently he's absent today. Rather in a specious way to start your tenure, but I hope he's well. Okay, now, something that's been on everybody's mind and, and copy tonight, public safety. In 2023, I had gunfire up to 100 feet from my driveway, three times, okay? How about you? Have you guys had fire, you know, gunfire in your neighborhood?
Yep.
Okay, I live only three and a half blocks from this police station, all right? So Chief Pidiya says he needs more officers, I heartily agree. Now, originally, there was an attempt to petition the citizens of Kent to place a ballot measure before the people to request support for a .03% sales tax increase to raise funds for cops. I saw a copy of that petition. Sales, or, sales tax is the most regressive form of taxation, and always impacts those on the lower income scale more greatly. You know this, okay? Now, the city has switched to a backdoor gambit by lobbying for a special dispensation from the state legislature to waive state law and bypass the .01% limitation for sales tax increases for public safety. This requires voter approval. My guess is that this is a quarterback sneak as a result of a major lack of support for the initiative attempt. Council, the citizens of Kent have already spoken, they want more police protection, but they cannot afford more sales tax. Listen to your constituents, these are the people that put you on this dais in the first place. People of Kent, if you agree we need more cops, but you can't afford more taxes, write, email, or phone your state legislators to let them know that this backhanded plan sucks. Contact your city council members to let them know that they need to properly utilize current revenue streams to meet public safety goals. They found the needs to give themselves 110% raises last year, and money obviously exists somewhere in the city coffers. Red light cameras bring millions of dollars annually to Kent in the name of public safety, okay? We now have four new ones. Where does all this money go, honestly? Showware center has never made a dime, never. Listen to a private operator and use that money for more cops. Tax apartment developers, which we have many of, who impact our infrastructure, police our infrastructure, so they pay their fair share. I mean, they still do not offer below-market rents, so, you know, let's find another way. No new taxes, please. And by the way, one more question, I got 12 seconds. Dana, what, how many city-operated facilities were opened for the homeless public for, during this weekend, because of the inclement weather? Was, was City Hall open?
So we had a severe weather shelter open, and if you have questions about that, I'd be happy to talk to you offline. The directions of public comment were very clear, not an opportunity for conversation.
Public can't hear the answer to that.
I just, I answered the question, I'm just as a reminder.
The next speaker is David Bunkelman.
Mayor, or not Mayor, the police chief touched on a lot of my concerns, but I live in Panther Lake, which we annexed years ago with the city of Kent, when we were unincorporated, the sheriff department would do random visits to our neighborhood, patrolling, because we have a problem with the Kent Ridge High School, parents coming on to our private property, blocking our fire lane, which is our entrance also. We've had three collisions, none of them have been our residents, been other parents hit each other, had near misses. I just talked with the resource officer, Officer Strong, last Friday, and he said, "Don't confront anybody." I go, "Okay, where are you?" He goes, "Well, I'm at the Laura Park Lot outside of Kent Ridge High School." I go, "Well," he goes, "I can't respond." I go, "Why not?" He goes, "'Cause I'm breaking up fights." What happened to our precinct in Panther Lake? Are you going to replace it? We used to have a precinct across from Safeway. So we have the problems with police response too when we're being blocked. We have emergency vehicles come and go 24 hours a day, because we have elderly seniors who, 1 o'clock in the morning, 3 o'clock in the morning, the fire department comes up in the morning, evening, doesn't matter. We need to keep our intersection clear. I just wanted to let you know about it.
No, thank you. And Chief Pidiya can certainly address your questions about that.
Talk with him, do a ride along with one of his officers, by the way, if I can.
Okay, quick clarification, so you talk about, is it those school hours you're talking about, when we see?
During the morning and afternoon, between 2:00 and 3:00, they get kids out early at noon on Wednesdays. About half an hour before, the parents come in and drop their kids off, and they're always in a hurry to go to work. They do a U-turn, they don't even stop in the intersection, they do a U-turn, and then almost hit whoever else is in the intersection.
Thank you. I'm sure the Chief got an answer for you. Thank you, sir.
In the school district, they tell me to go to the police, the police say it's the school's problem.
You're in the right spot tonight, that's your man, okay?
Kim, do we have any other speakers?
We do not.
All right. That then concludes our public comment, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Council, we have items A through H before you on the consent calendar, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. All right, that brings us down to item number nine, which is other business. We have only one item under, under business this evening, and it's the Sound Transit Rezone. Joining us is Sam Alcorn from Economic and Community Development, and he will provide the staff presentation. But first, I would like to invite Tammy White, our city attorney, to say a few words about the nature of the proceedings before the council tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So council, this is a quasi-judicial matter that's before you tonight, so I have just a little bit of explanation and colloquy to go through, just mainly for the record. But the materials for the Sound Transit Rezone appear in your council packet on the electronic page of 350. So tonight, you're being asked to consider a rezone of 1.09 acres of property located at 23453 30th Avenue South. The request is to rezone it from MHP, which is Mobile Home Park, to MTC2, which is Midway Transit Community 2. ECD staff is here, and they'll explain in their presentation the effect that that change will have if you elect to approve it. A map showing the property's location is on page 364 in your agenda packet, if you'd like to orient yourself to it. The property is currently owned by Central Puget Sound Regional Transit Authority, also known as Sound Transit. The applicant filing the rezone request is Sound Transit through its representative, Matthew Mateo. No one spoke in opposition to the rezone request before the hearings examiner, and Mercy Housing and Open Doors spoke in support of the rezone request before the hearing examiner. An open record hearing was held before the hearing examiner on November 1st of 2023. Public notice of that hearing was given as required by the Kent City Code, which staff can explain in their presentation, and also after the hearing, the hearing examiner recommended that council approve the rezone request, and that is also the recommendation before you tonight for consideration. And if you agree with the hearing examiner, then adoption of the implementing ordinance is also included in your packet, and that is the motion that would carry tonight after the presentation. Because this matter would change the zoning on a specific parcel of property, it is considered a quasi-judicial matter. Typically, you sit as a legislative body where you help develop policy for the city. On legislative matters, outside influences can and often do sway what you choose to do with an issue. However, in a quasi-judicial matter, you sit as a panel of judges, and you determine the legal rights of specific parties by applying previously established and developed policy to a particular property in a hearing or other proceeding. When you are applying that policy as opposed to developing it, you must sit as an impartial, fair, and free from outside influences in making your decision. To help ensure fairness and impartiality, the Appearance of Fairness Doctrine was developed through the courts and then adopted into state law. And that is currently codified at Chapter 4236 of our State Revised Code of Washington. Before tonight's council meeting, each of you completed an Appearance of Fairness Disclosure Statement and provided that statement to the city clerk. I've reviewed each of those disclosure statements, and all council members advise that they did not have any ex parte communication with any proponent or opponent of the rezone request, you did not have any personal interest in the proposed rezone, and you are able to consider the rezone request fairly and impartially. Before further proceeding with staff's presentation, I do have one final question for the audience, if I may, Mayor, and that is, of anybody here, do any of you have a lawful basis to ask for the recusal of a council member due to the Appearance of Fairness Doctrine? And Madam Mayor, seeing no responses from the audience, the record has established that each member of council is qualified to consider this quasi-judicial matter, and the matter may proceed. I would ask, however, that the disclosure statements that were previously provided to the city clerk in which I reviewed be included in the record from tonight's proceeding.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to add these disclosure statements to the council's record of tonight's proceeding concerning the rezone request?
Second.
Of a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. So at this time, we are ready to proceed, and I was going to invite Sam up, but he's already here, ready to go, to give the presentation to council on this rezone request.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm Sam Alcorn, Senior Planner here at the city of Kent.
Sam, hang on one second, Kim.
I'm sorry, Mayor, could you clarify who moved and who seconded?
Councilmember Troutner and Councilmember Core.
Thank you.
Start over. All right, good evening, everyone. Again, I'm Sam Alcorn, Senior Planner here at Kent, and it was my job to review the Sound Transit Rezone for compliance to City Code, as well as provide public notice and collect public comments. Today, I'll summarize a bit of the history of the property, as well as the rezone proposal, some of how public notice was provided, as well as a recommendation for the project. So a bit of background, like Tammy mentioned, the site is currently undeveloped. However, previously, the Jackson Trailer Park existed there, and in 2019, Sound Transit acquired the property and discontinued the trailer park use, and the whole area now is being used as staging and construction for the new Kinda Morning Light Rail Station. And so this site is like on the north end of where the light rail platform station's going to be. As part of federal funding for the light rail extension, Sound Transit was responsible for relocation of those who lived in the Mobile Home Park. So there were 18 manufactured homes there, 16 were owner occupied, one was rented out, one was unoccupied, and there was someone who had a roommate. And so of those people, 12 of the owner occupants purchased replacement manufactured homes and other parks, four purchased traditional stick-built homes, the roommate relocated, and the tenant also relocated to an apartment. So generally, for the proposal, as Tammy mentioned, it's to rezone from Mobile Home Park to Midway Transit Community 2, MTC2, and that is consistent with the adjacent zoning of kind of directly bordering parcels, as well as in the general vicinity. And that zoning allows for the, you know, high-density mixed-use residential development that is... that is desired right next to the light rail station. So as I mentioned, a lot of the surrounding parcels are currently undeveloped, but there is a plan and zoning to develop this into, you know, high-capacity transit housing. No environmental review is needed for this project because it's located in the Midway Transit Community, which already had an environmental impact stage, statement prepared and reviewed to accommodate any environmental impacts in the area. For public notice, notice was published in the Kent Reporter, posted on site, and sent to agencies of, and parties of interest. And then there was also a notice of public hearing, which was done the same as far as putting it in the Kent Reporter, notifying agencies, but also mailing to property owners within 300 feet. The only public comments were in for support. Mercy Housing and Open Doors for Multicultural Families, which have been selected by Sound Transit to develop the property, wrote in for support. And then for review criteria, the Kent City Code has five items to review for, for granting a rezone. The first is that the proposed rezone is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, which it is, that the proposed rezone is compatible with development in the vicinity. Again, the surrounding parcels are zoned similarly. Third, that the rezone will not unduly burden the transportation system. The big investment into our light rail will accommodate a lot of the new transportation demand, but also transportation impact fees will be assessed for new units. Fourth is that the circumstances have changed substantially since the establishment of the current Mobile Home Park zoning, and of course, it has with the construction of the new light rail station. And then lastly, the rezone will not adversely affect health, safety, and general welfare of citizens, which it won't. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions people might have.
Lot of work to get us to this point. Council, any questions for Sam? All right, seeing none, a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 4483, accepting the hearing examiner's recommendation and approving Sound Transit's rezone request.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. All right, that, we don't have any bids this evening, nor do we have an executive session, so that brings us down to the bottom of the agenda. Just want to tell everybody to be safe out there. We're expecting some rain and maybe freezing rain this evening, so good thing that everyone is going to get home tonight. So with that, we are adjourned.